That brings us to, back to items nine point five. Sorry for the delay. Discuss and take action to permit Judge James Henderson to sign statement of grant award concerning Texas Indigent Defense Commission Grant Number One, or Two One Two Dash Two Four Dash Inasenora Zero Two Program Title Managed Assigned Counsel Program, Grant Period Ten One Twenty Twenty Three Through Nine Thirty Twenty Twenty Four. That's about all.
All right, may please the court, thank you very much. You know, it's really always remarkable to me when I come over here and see just the breadth and variety of things that y'all deal with, you know, from the four H to the Platts to the Burn Man, and it's just, you know, I compliment you for your, you know, ability to study all that stuff and keep up with it all. I'm here to speak in support of the item that Judge Dossie just called, as well as the next one, because they're kind of related. I want to give you a little bit of a brief overview, a brief review of this managed assigned counsel project. I was here several months ago and gave y'all some materials to look at, but I want to just hopefully briefly review this. This project really originated with a trip that we made to Lubbock County last spring as part of our mental health diversion project. We were interested in going to Lubbock and seeing how they did their mental health diversion, because it really had been recognized as one of the best mental health diversion programs in the state. And so while we were down there, we were exposed to their managed assigned counsel office, which is a very unique way that Lubbock provides indigent defense to criminal defendants, adult defendants on misdemeanor and felony cases. You may know that Lubbock County is one of the most conservative counties in the state. And so the fact that they were able to implement something that really was not a public defender's office, but that worked well in the conservative environment that they had there, that was supported by the bar, was supported by the judiciary, and supported by their commissioners' court, was something that really kind of stood out to me. It made me think this was something we might want to look at in Grayson County. So from the time that we went to Lubbock, over the next number of months, I had a lot of private conversations with different people who were involved in the process. And that kind of led to the idea that this might be something that we wanted to look at further. And so I convened meetings with people who met as a group, that kind of studied it, who discussed it, and kind of went forward from there. We had a number of meetings and presentations where we, as individuals who worked in this area in this county, discussed it from a lot of different angles. And we also communicated with the Texas Engine Defense Commission in Austin, who had done a lot of, say, academic study in it. And they had developed a lot of literature that studied this kind of new concept of managed assigned counsel. I appeared before this court on April the twenty fifth of this year. And the court approved the submission of a grant application to the Texas Indigent Defense Commission. And that application was filed on May the fifth. It was considered by a grants review committee through the Texas Engine Defense Commission, which was chaired by Judge Sharon Keller, who's the presiding judge of the Texas Court of Criminal Appeals, which is the highest criminal court in the state of Texas. And I appeared by Zoom at that meeting and kind of explained what it was we had in mind. And that was, that was approved by the grants committee. And then the following day, it was approved by the Texas Indigent Defense Commission Board as a whole. That approval was actually voted on on June the twenty ninth. In the meantime, between the time that the application was approved and the time that we submitted it, I made a presentation to the Grayson County Bar Association, where it was discussed kind of publicly with the bar. And that was on May the eleventh. And my feeling was that the Grayson County Bar Association is, is very much in support of going forward with this. And they even approved some financial support for it. Not a lot, but they did approve writing us a check, or writing a check to the MAC to get it started. The check's still sitting on my desk. We haven't spent any of it yet, because we're kind of waiting for some other things to happen. We eventually received the grant award letter, which is part of the packet that I presented to the court, which is the several-page document that's covered by a letter from Judge Keller dated August the thirtieth. And we got it a few days later. And they have asked whether we want to accept the grant. And so that's kind of what I want to talk about a little bit. Let me just kind of remind everyone of the concept of the North Texas Managed Assigned Counsel's Office. There would be a private office that would be organized as a nonprofit corporation to be managed by an independent board of directors. And it will be modeled on the Lubbock Private Defender Office. And the interface between the private MAC office and our county would be through a contract that we would negotiate initially with our county to manage the indigent defense assignments for felony and misdemeanor cases in all five courts. On our side, on the county's side, we would create an oversight board, which really would be responsible for overseeing the contract between the county and the MAC. And that would include representatives from the district courts, the county courts at law, the commissioners' court, the Grayson County Bar Association, and it would also include the county auditor. And that is the subject of the second action item that is after this one. So basically, we would have two parallel tracks, really. There would be the county track, which would be represented by the oversight board and would be responsible for communicating to the MAC and with the Texas Engine Defense Commission what our needs are, what our requirements are, what we want. And then there would be a track through the managed assigned counsel office to establish their own board of directors, to hire an executive director, to hire a staff person in addition to the executive director, to lease, lease office space, and do the sorts of things that they do to do that. And the Texas Indigent Defense Commission, and I met with them, talked to them in a conference call Friday before last. I spoke to the two highest-ranking executives at Texas Engine Defense Commission, and they have offered to and want to help us develop this project. They have offered to attend whatever meetings we'd like for them to attend by Zoom. And at a certain point, if we want them to come here to Grayson County and make public presentations, they're willing to do that. Let me just kind of briefly talk about what I feel like the advantages are. You know, we previously kind of disclosed, or given everybody the material that Texas Engine Defense Commission has developed that describes in great detail what some of the advantages of the managed assigned counsel office would be. Higher accountability, better quality in indigent defense, better cost effectiveness in indigent defense through reduced jail population, increased efficiency, institutionalization of indigent defense, decreased administrative costs, budget predictability. It would provide an institutional resource and also would provide much more independence in providing indigent defense than we have now. There's some additional advantages that I personally see. I think a MAC office, which is organized as a nonprofit, will embrace the goal of independence between not really kind of removing the judiciary from having to supervise defense lawyers, which if you look at the American Bar Association goals, you look at the way the legal system is set up, that's just not something we need to have happen. Defense attorneys and prosecutors need to operate independently in order to represent the people that they, that they're required to represent. So I think it would more fully embrace the goal of independence. There is also a goal to expand or position this MAC office in a way that could expand beyond Grayson County, to contract with other counties to provide indigent defense in those other counties in addition to Grayson County. And I think having a MAC office established would make it more easily, more easily allow that to happen. A regional office would give participating attorneys easier entry to other counties. For example, like to be on our indigent defense will, these attorneys have to apply to Grayson County. Now, a lot of them, even under the present system, are on indigent defense wills in other counties. They may go to Collin County or Fannie County or wherever. If we have a centralized office, then the office could be responsible for doing that through a contract that they have with whatever other county they contract with. Positioning an office like this with a mechanism to allow it to contract with other counties would also reduce the administrative cost of each particular county. The idea that we've discussed is setting up a MAC office as a nonprofit, eventually getting five, five oh one C three designation, which would allow alternative sources of funding for the office beyond taxpayers. It also would provide a more direct, consistent accountability for indigent defense services, initially in Grayson County, but also throughout the region. This type of solution also doesn't directly grow government, but is really fashioned as more of a public-private partnership. And if you believe in conservative government, as I do, and I know as, as you do, that's really the goal, I think, of what we're trying to achieve. And the fact that, as I said earlier, one of the most conservative counties in our state has adopted this is evidence that this can work in a, in a successful way. Now, the grant application itself has previously been submitted to the court and also is included in one of the handouts or one of the attachments to the agenda item. And I don't want to get into the weeds here too deep, but I do want to just kind of mention that in the materials, in the grant application, it does have some very specific things that the MAC has to do to address very measurable outputs and very measurable outcomes. This is in the paperwork that is going to be part of the creation documents if we do go forward with this. And just let me mention a few of them. There will be a monthly report detailing their department caseload, monthly report detailing the number of disposed cases, a report average caseload of all attorneys by month, report the average cost per case by year, the percentage of cases assigned to the office, the average cost of case by year. They're going to report the average number of days between receipt of the order of appointment and contact with the defendant. They will report when they meet that and when they don't, under the, under the rules that would be established. They would report the average number of days between receipt of the order of appointment and the initial interview with an incarcerated defendant. They'll report the number of dismissals, guilty pleas pursuant to plea agreement, open pleas to, of guilty to a jury or to the court. Report the number of cases where they're convicted, the number of cases where they're found not guilty, the sentence that each case is assigned to the MAC, where a sentence is imposed. They'll report any change between the pre-test and post-test, as well as annual changes. There will be regular evaluations and surveys of how this is operating. So those sorts of measurables are included in this.
Judge, can I ask a question? Are any of those tracked currently?
No, not effectively.
Okay.
They're not, they're not tracked effectively.
Okay.
And so really, I mean, I think there's some other people here that would like to make a few remarks, if you have time. Judge Seaman's here, Judge, Judge Dunn is here. All the judges are in really strong support of this. And just to conclude kind of this part of what I wanted to present to you, and, you know, be available certainly to answer, I'm sure, the questions that you all have. But I just want to conclude by, by saying this, and this kind of echoes some remarks I gave to the Grayson County Bar Association. And that is, is that the legal system really is in a very unique position to identify when things within the legal system aren't working the way that they should and need to be addressed. And I'm proud of being a lawyer. I've been a lawyer for about thirty-five years. And, and I'm proud of the fact that, as a member of this profession, we can really provide this to, to commissioners' courts and people who make the important financial decisions. And this is one. I don't think there's any escaping the fact that this is a change, major change, in the way that we've done things here in Grayson County. And so I understand this is an important decision. And I appreciate the fact that you moved it to the end to allow us to talk about this as we need to. But I think that the attorneys and the judges are in a very unique position to try to creatively fashion solutions to problems that we see. And our, our work as lawyers really addresses how to solve problems for clients. And as, as a lawyer who is now a judge, who's now a public official, I kind of carry that through to, to where I am now. And I believe that we do have a continuing obligation to improve the profession, the justice system, and our community. And that's really what we're hoping to do. This is not a temporary fix. This is a program that could be in place for a number of decades and provide an important bit of progress to the way we provide this service in our county. So if you'd like to hear from Judge Seaman and Judge Dunn, I think they have some remarks they'd like to share.
Absolutely.
Good morning, everyone. It's nice to see you this morning. I'm not going to belabor what Judge Henderson has just said. He's covered everything in detail. I've been a part of the groundbreaking program that he put in place and have attended all of the meetings and listened to the experts and read reports. And I can say, from my experience, when I took the bench twenty-some-odd years ago, and through the time that I was on the bench, the appointment of counsel was very loosely organized. It fell on the, it fell into the hands of each individual judge. And we had to handle what we could handle. We had to make the assignments. We had to determine how much was going to be paid by the attorney. And it really got us into areas where judges are not meant to be. But that's just the way that Grayson County had done it for so long. We tried to make some improvements, but those were just Band-Aids. And some of the judges adopted them, some of them didn't. But I am really encouraged by the MAC program. I think it's exactly what we need. It's going to take it out of the hands of the sitting judges. It's going to put it into a process that will be overseen by various people, that everyone will know, and that those individuals will be responsible for everything that goes on in the office. It will be a freestanding office. It won't be run by the judges. It won't be answerable to the judges necessarily, except where the judge finds that there's some, some issue that needs to be taken up. But other than that, I think it's going to move things along. It's, hopefully, it's going to move people in and out of the jail as appropriate, en banc, and already knowing who their counsel is going to be. They will have a person to report to. If their counsel doesn't contact them in a timely manner, that will be made known to the office, and that will be addressed by the office. If counsel does not show up for hearings, and unfortunately, those things do happen, that office would be notified that their attorney had not shown up for the hearing and would address that with that attorney. And that, so it's going to keep things moving, it's going to keep things more predictable. And as Judge Henderson went through, there are going to be many reports given on an annual basis to see how the county is coming along. And we can compare that to the haphazard system that, that they're still working in right now. And it, it will show a great improvement, I'm encouraged. So I, I won't take up any more of your time, but I am very, I do commend this program to you for your serious consideration.
Judge Dunn?
I'll be very brief. I want to publicly thank Judge Henderson for the work he's done on this. It's been an amazing amount of work and time and effort. I've seen the emails, I've seen the meetings, it's just an incredible amount of work. I'm also here, like Judge Seaman, to publicly support the MAC program. I think it'll ease the jail, get people appointed quicker, get people out of jail. I filed about nine hundred cases this year in my court, and I've pled maybe three hundred. So because COVID, statutes are running, so I'm filing forty to fifty cases a week. This will impact the ability to appoint people almost the same day the cases are filed and get people represented into court. I'm also a big proponent of defense rights, having been a prosecutor and defense attorney. And like Judge Henderson said, I believe this will greatly increase the professionalism and effectiveness of the attorneys who represent indigent defendants, and they need that, and I think the law demands that. So I'm a, I'm here to publicly support this, and I think it's great for the, for the county. Everybody knows this, we're growing, and I think this is just a, a way to add to Grayson County what it stands for.
Judge Henderson, before, I know there's going to be a list of questions, but let me ask just a few to start. So yourself, Judge Dunn, I'm assuming Judge Phillips, Judge Fallon, Judge Gary, and the Grayson County Bar Association, all experts in your field, recommend this program?
Well, I think the judges certainly do. I think when you talk about Grayson County Bar Association, it's an organization of multiple attorneys. You know, my sense is, is that there's broad support. I'm not sure I can say that every single lawyer in the county supports it, but
Okay.
the meeting that we attended did reflect some very broad support, and as I said, they
But all, all of our current judges do?
Yes.
Okay. Is Judge Fallon on board with?
Yes.
Okay.
We, we had, we had a meeting last week.
And currently?
And I just wanted to make sure that they were
With Judge Fallon?
Yes.
And he says he's on board?
That's what he said.
And currently, for the basic stance of it, each court that needs an indigent defense attorney, it's, y'all have your coordinator that assigns them counsel in some form or fashion, but it's up to the judges to make sure that those defense attorneys are meeting with their clients at the appropriate amount of time. There's, there's some, a little bit of babysitting, for lack of a better term, by the judges?
I would say that the judges don't. I mean, if it, if it is an extreme situation, I think judges step in.
Okay.
You know?
So the court coordinators really handle getting the attorneys off the will?
Well, I think to get an attorney off the will, it would take a vote of the judges. I don't know that we use
To use them on the will. So we got this wheel full of judges, I mean, full of attorneys.
Right.
Okay, and so the court coordinators are the one that say, well, I'm going to pull a attorney for this particular case, is that correct? So we have people that are doing this.
Well, yes. There, there are people in the system that appoint attorneys. It's kind of a complicated process. The rules require that an attorney that's among the top five on the will be appointed. There are times when, you know, as judges, like in my court, for example, we have a number of mental health defendants. And so we try to utilize attorneys who have more of a specialty in experience in mental health.
Who assign those, who, who we have
We can, I communicate with my court coordinator, and I think to a certain degree, all of the judges do. I mean, they kind of know the general idea of how to get an attorney appointed. But there are, there are difficulties in that.
So let me ask you this, do we have a problem getting attorneys on our Grayson County will?
We do.
And why is that?
I think it depends on who you talk to. I, I think that
At the end of the day, is it really just about the money?
Not at all, I don't think so.
If we pay the attorneys more?
I really don't.
So why do our Grayson County attorneys head toward Collin County? Because we've got a list of some of the payments that Collin and Tarrant County and people are paying. And, I mean, if we were paying more, would we have more attorneys on the wheel to move cases quicker?
I think that's potentially true. I think that's potentially true. I think there are a lot of reasons why attorneys accept or want to accept cases in particular counties. And I, and I think money is certainly a very important part of it, absolutely. I don't think there's any question of that. I, having been to a lot of those meetings and haven't talked to a lot of them, I don't think that's the only reason which, you know, which I certainly want to make clear, but I think money is
So what's the other reason we can't keep attorneys on our will, if it's not money? What's another reason?
I think there are administrative issues. I think that there are issues related to efficiencies in the work that they do. And I'll give you, I'll give you a couple of examples. I think one of the things that this MAC office will provide is the ability for attorneys to access administrative support through computer technology, through an administrative support person who will be employed by the MAC, who will provide them assistance in meeting their clients in the jail, accessing discovery materials from the district attorney's office, the ability to understand the types of motions to be filed, a, an ability to coordinate their caseload, an ability to coordinate the schedules that they have when they have cases in multiple courts. Because, you know, right now, even in Grayson County, there are lawyers that are on multiple wheels. And there's really very little coordination between the different courts on who's to be appointed and when their case is going to be set. And so things like that, that just make it sometimes more difficult to practice in a, in a particular county. Now, the other thing that I think we see through, basically, the group of court-appointed attorneys, and I don't know if Judge Dunn can speak to this or not. Judge Dunn was on the court-appointed attorney will for many, many years. And I see it from the judge's perspective, he sees it from the attorney's perspective. But I think that having the ability to receive cases and be scheduled for cases in a more efficient way and to have some sort of administrative support, I think is, is important to attorneys. And the other thing that I think you see in this group of attorneys who have chosen to be on these court-appointed attorney wheels is that, like I said, this is not the only thing that they do. They have private practices, they have practices in other counties, maybe on their court-appointed attorney will. And that's really not something that the method of appointing attorneys really recognizes. You know, we don't call this particular attorney, and we just assign them, you know?
So it's not just the money, it's the administrative process, it's the, how, the, the process in which they're assigned, how they're scheduled, to make sure that they're met with their, their, their clients in a timely manner, like you mentioned, discovery, all of those things. So it's not just pay, it's organization in itself.
I was obviously a defense attorney up until January. Hunt County pays more than we do, Cook County pays more than we do, Fannie County pays more than we do, and a lot more. When I got fees raised in two thousand eighteen, I think we're the second lowest-paid indigent defense bar in the whole state, by far. I don't think we can raise fees enough to eliminate this request. Because I think the highest-paid attorney in Grayson County on indigent defense is like fifty thousand dollars. You go to Tarrant County and make a hundred and fifty to a hundred and eighty thousand dollars in the exact same work. You, you can't, you can't, there's not enough money here to do that.
This doesn't solve that.
No, it doesn't.
Well, that's, I think that's his point. It's, his point is, is that we're, we're never going to be able to compete with what they pay in Tarrant County.
You can't do that. And they, counties around here pay by the case. For instance, I had a, a guy in Judge Gary's court back in two thousand twenty, had twelve separate indicted felony cases. I got six hundred bucks. I do that, and in Tarrant County, I get paid six hundred dollars per case. So it's just, it's, it's cost prohibitive to try to raise the fees. That's why I, I think it's more about money than anything.
So it's more about
Addressing that, though, this, you know, when, when I've, you know, in the past, when I've asked, I said, what, what is the real problem we have? And it's, we, you know, attorneys don't want to serve, don't want to do the cases.
Well, you got to keep in mind
So having this in there, you know, and I'm assuming the attorney probably employs an administrative assistant, or, you know, they're not, you know, somebody's helping with their schedule. So, so we're going to provide their administrative assistant, their secretary for them?
Well, we're providing a service to the indigent defendants in this county by providing additional support to the attorneys who represent them.
So right now, we've got, going into indigent events, we're spending, we've, we, we budget one point two million dollars towards that. one point two million dollars towards that, and then there's some expenses that, you know, associated with it. What would it cost if we set up a public defender's office? I don't know. I mean, you know, it's...
I would say that, so a public defender's office, I don't think would receive much support, if at all. And that is...
Why? I mean, you know...
Explain why.
If they're only making fifty thousand doing this, we could hire twelve, twelve people making, you know, a hundred thousand dollars a year.
And we've got the office space, because you said you were going to have to have office space and hire an executive director and hire administrative clerks for that. So, I mean, we're, to even set the backup is an awful lot of money, and we do have a grant, but do we, will we have the grant next year after we finally got this thing set up, or is that just coming out of our pocket? So, we're just trying to figure out the money.
I, I, look, I welcome this conversation, I really do. I, if you have concerns, I want to address them. I understand that you may, you may be leaning towards supporting it, you may be leaning against it, you may not have your mind made up, and however this commissioner's court votes on this, I'm, I'm perfectly fine with it, okay? But let me, let me just address a couple of things that kind of arose from Commissioner James' question. Now, I would say the main difference between this and a public defender's office is, the county line item is going to be a contract. The county line item on a public defender's office is going to be employee, and I just, I just don't think that's the way that we need to go. And, and I'm not sure I can, I'm prepared to tick off five, six different reasons why a public defender's not, is not appropriate for our county, but I can say, during the twenty years that I've been a judge, every time that subject has come up, there has been major opposition from the judiciary and the bar association to it, and there are a lot of reasons why a public defender is, you know, maybe suitable in a county like Travis County, you know, where, where, you know, the government's in control of all of it, but that's not really what I see, just like philosophically, for, for what we're doing here. I think if, if you look at a private defender's office as a contract line item, that gives our county the opportunity to renew it on a yearly basis, or not renew it on a yearly basis. And so, if this office is not performing in the way that we need it to perform, we can step away from that. Now, you know, there's going to be a lot that goes into developing this, and then I'm not going to say it's going to be running a hundred miles an hour on day one, but as a contract, we will have some meaningful control over that as a county from year to year, that I think when you just implement a public defender's office, you're, you're probably a lot more stuck with it than with a contract. And so, that's kind of the things that I would say. I mean, I'm sure TIDC would probably give us a grant for a public defender's office as well, if that's what the, what the county wants to do, but I think it would, it would require a lot more study and conversation than what we've had so far, frankly. I, and, and to the point about it, like a public defender's office, that doesn't really always eliminate the need for private lawyers, anyway. You know, there are going to be conflicts that arise, and when you have multiple defendants and that sort of thing, and I don't, do you have any experience with public defender's offices?
No, when I, when I did my research back five years ago, I called a lot of counties, and, and they were all opposed to them. Basically, we just, attorneys don't like them, judges don't like them, they never really gave me a reason why. My biggest concern would be conflicts Judge Henderson just alluded to. When you've got two or three defendants on cases, you've got a small public defender's office, well, they're going to be conflicted out of half the cases. So what do you do then? Who do you appoint to represent those people that are indigent, but they're conflicted out from being represented by a public defender's office? And that's a big problem.
Well, I would assume the opposition from the lawyers is, they don't want to have to give up their, their, their bigger moneymakers to be able to do this as well. They're not, they're not just doing stuff as an indigent defense attorney.
I don't think they would.
Suppose if they go to work for us in that, that department, they can't take outside cases if they're working for them?
That's right, and I think they would be prohibited from, from having a private practice, and you'd have to bring in...
Which our prosecutors are in the same boat, I guess.
Exactly, yeah.
Sheriff Watt, how do, what's your perspective, just from the jail perspective?
First off, I, I appreciate the fact that the judges are trying to do something. I'm going to stay in my lane here. I'm, I'm not about the solution here, I'm about the problem. We do have a problem. I hear regularly, when my lawyer, I, I never heard back from my lawyer, and, and they are court-appointed attorneys, and so my job here today is to explain to you, we do have a problem, and we pay sixty-five-ish dollars a day for those folks to sit in our jail, and a portion of that problem is the lack of action from the attorneys that are representing these folks. So I applaud Judge Henderson for trying to find some solution, and I will tell you that I made the same trip out to Lubbock County and spoke to their law enforcement folks. I didn't actually speak to Sheriff Kelly Rowe, but his chief deputy was very...
Bill Hammer?
Sorry?
His name's Bill Hammer?
Yes, yes, yes. How could I have forgotten that name?
I forgot that, yeah, Bill Hammer.
Yeah.
It doesn't look like you would imagine, but...
Right, right. He was appreciative of the system that they have, whether this is the system to go with, or, you know, the, the, the office itself. My job today is to tell you, we do have a problem. If you think that we don't, just come and talk to some of our inmates. The attorneys are not responsive. I'm not sure why, but the system we have today does not work, and again, I would applaud Judge Henderson and the others trying to solve a problem, because we do have a problem.
Thank you. Kuscher Whitmer, questions, concerns? Because we can, we can continue to discuss this if y'all want to, back and forth for as long as you want, or do you want an opportunity to ask your questions and concerns? I know you've got some questions, I know Commissioner James...
Yeah, we have.
You know, we go through a lot of this stuff, you know, I, I guess I don't understand, you know, what the, if we say, yes, we'll accept this grant, well, we don't, right now, we don't have any budgetary layout of it, we don't have a plan of action, a plan of operations, you know, in your deal, I mean, there's a, there's a big list of things you're required to do for the state within this thing, you know, but we don't know what those, you know, we don't know what that operation's going to look like. How much time, you know, the last time when you, you came in, you said, no, we've got a deadline of next week to submit this grant application. Said, okay, well, we don't know enough about it to actually accept the grant application, but go ahead and submit.
Yeah.
Well, now, okay, now it comes down to, do we accept it? We need to understand, you know, in greater detail, on the local level, not what Lubbock's doing, or whoever else is doing. What are we going to do, and how is this going to make our system better?
And then, one of the questions I, I do have is, is who's going to be the administrator? Who, who's going to make sure that we're meeting the qualifications of the grant in, in doing all, because you have your own docket. Who's going to be the overall person that is going to set all of this in motion?
So I think I do have answers for these, for these questions. So, as I said, right now, we are prepared to implement parallel tracks, and on the county side...
Meaning, when you say parallel tracks, you're, you're talking about working towards that and continue doing what you're doing now?
Well, we're going to continue doing what we're doing now until this court approves a contract with the MAC.
Right.
We're not going to spend a nickel until a contract is presented that is acceptable to this court. And so, what, 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 at this stage, really, the way I look at it, we're reserving grant money. Now, it does, like all of these decisions, the further down the road you step, the closer you are to kind of committing to it, you know, and I, I, you know, I think that's what, what, just realistically, what you need to take, take about. When I talk about par, parallel tracks, the, the managed assigned counsel office will be set up by an independent board of directors that will be selected by them, and there has already been some conversations about that. It will be modeled on the way the Lubbock County is, Lubbock County MAC is set up. You're going to have probably five or so lawyers who will be the board of directors of the MAC, and they will be responsible for doing all of the things necessary to create this office, including hiring, hiring an executive director, chief defender, and so they're responsible for that. And, and when it is implemented, that office will be responsible for providing to our county the measurable data that I indicated earlier. So they're doing all of that.
But right now, we don't have anything to measure it against.
Well...
To, to be able to measure the performance of this thing, if it's working or not...
I think at a bottom line, you can measure it against how much money we spend, you know? But I mean, that's kind of a, that's kind of like a, a big...
Mayor may not have a couple of lawsuits going on, too.
But, but, but you will be able to measure, once it starts out, the progression from when it starts and what it looks like a year later, you know? And, and these, these measurables, and like, I know you want to talk about what we're going to do locally, but these are not Corky Henderson's measurables, these are measurables that have been identified, like in the literature and study of indigent defense as being important factors to measure.
You know, it covers, you know, they've got to report X, Y, Z, the thing, you know, some of these, those things, those, those are within the state requirements...
Yeah.
That, that those things get, you know, noted.
And eventually, and eventually, what we want to do, like, originally, or initially, the way we are going to start out baby steps is, our county will identify individuals who qualify for an indigent defense attorney, generally under the same guidelines we use now. When we identify that, that person's name will be given to the managed assigned counsel office to represent. Now, there, there are some efficiencies that can occur, where maybe some MAC representative is present at arraignment dockets, where a lot of times, at least in misdemeanor courts, people get their attorney for the first time to maybe move cases sooner. But just setting all that aside, that's how it would work. And so, the executive director would monitor the performance of that attorney, and when that attorney completes his or her assignment, they will provide a fee voucher to the executive director, who will approve it under guidelines that our county establishes, and it will go to our county auditor to pay. Now, the way that happens now is, the fee voucher goes to the attorney, or goes to the judge to approve and go, and so there are some efficiencies there. But that's, you know, basically the way the thing would work, and eventually...
So the judge approves the pay for the guy, the defense attorney?
Currently.
Current.
Currently, under guidelines that we, that we have established.
I just wanted to make sure, because I knew it, but I want to make sure.
The judge approves the voucher.
The judge approves the voucher, which is kind of a conflict of...
So does the judge have, have authority over, I mean, is there this big gap into, I can pay this one, this, or this? I mean, does the judge have discretion on what that person's paying?
So, under the, under the Texas Indigent Defense Commission guidelines, statutory guidelines, each county has to adopt an indigent defense plan that says, this is how we're going to do indigent defense, and that's how we've done it here. It's a plan that has to be approved by TIDC, so we're already, to a certain degree, under their oversight.
Okay.
And within that plan, it describes pay, and so...
So we've got that?
Yes, and so in, and so in, on the misdemeanor plan, which is the one that I put together, we have one for felonies and one for misdemeanors. They're very similar, but they're not identical. We have a fee schedule, this flat fee schedule. Now, within the indigent defense plan, there, there is the ability of a judge to basically pay an attorney whatever the judge feels it is appropriate to pay, because these are not all cookie cutter cases.
So the judge has that ability to raise the pay from the fee schedule that is set? Is that what you're saying?
Yes.
Yeah, and we've had instances where that's come up, because they needed an experienced attorney, so they had to kind of go outside of the will to make sure, because there's also what, what happens on appeal, you know, if somebody files their appeal and says their lawyer wasn't qualified, or that, you know, they didn't apply for discovery in the right amount of time, there's, there's a lot of facets to it, that with the pay voucher being signed by the judge, in my opinion, sounds like it creates a conflict of interest about, you know, well, I'm going to just pay this cheap attorney because, you know, I want this guy to go to jail.
But that's a state law, that's a state law.
It's, it's, well, it's required by the Constitution of the United States.
To provide...
Yeah, provide counsel, right.
So you're saying that the MAC's the one that submits the vouchers, then it's just a flat fee regardless, with no give or take?
Well, not necessarily, not necessarily.
So there could be give or take, just like with the judges?
There could be. And, and I don't want to get too far ahead of it, because like, there is no contract...
We're way ahead of them.
There's no contract that's been developed right now, you know? And so, you know, at this point, what's going to happen is, if, if this is approved, the MAC board will be set up by the attorneys, and there will be a contract that is developed that says, this is what the MAC can do, this is what we need as a county, and, and so there will have to be that, that contract. When you're talking about those sorts of specifics, those still have to be developed. Now, we're not reinventing the wheel. Again, there are contracts that exist between MACs and counties that we're aware of, that we've looked at, whether they're all suitable for Grayson County or not, probably not a hundred percent, but there is some guidance there to allow us to look at those things.
Well, here, my, my opinion is, I'm never going to fully understand what it is that your, your job entails, or what the attorney's job entails, but I do rely on the fact that in cases of that, I turn to the experts in your field. So if you, Judge Dunn, Judge Fallon, Judge Phillips, Judge Gary, think that we have a problem, and the sheriff, from his perspective, have a problem, and this is a solution to solve that problem, we have the grant money that would help assist us in establishing that, and we already have fees that we pay for indigent defense that are going to go towards paying this, so it's not going to cost us extra. And me, in my opinion, not being an expert in that field, am going to defer to what the experts say. This is out of what our norm is, but I know that there's been research done, I understand that. I am in favor of trying it, getting it off the ground, seeing where it goes, solely based on, we, we have a funding mechanism, we have some money to give it a try, at the end of the grant period, it doesn't work, we look at something else, and we move on from there. But we're not having to reinvent the wheel, and it goes back to, in my opinion, when you, when you don't know the full story, and you don't know the, not necessarily the full story, but you don't know all the aspects of what everything happens, we could talk probably for the next eight hours, and we're still not going to have a full, clear understanding of what the judges and attorneys do. But in my opinion, the experts are saying this, I'm in favor of trying it, and I would propose that we put it to a vote, or put it to, if y'all want more discussion...
I asked a while ago, when's the, when is the deadline to, to make the decision to accept this grant?
Well, I think there's some playing the joints there. I think that...
Well, give us a short answer.
There's some, okay, I'll try, I'll do the best I can. What they, what they have asked us to do is for me to sign this...
The accept.
And send it back to them.
That's what's it...
What that does, that does not obligate us necessarily to do anything at all, because we're still paying for indigent defense. What this does is say, Texas Indigent Defense Commission, when we are in a position to reach an agreement with the MAC to get started, you are going to have money for us through this grant.
So if we...
Now, we can, we can accept this, subject to available county funds, if we want to do that, because, as I said before, our county is not going to spend a penny more than we're already spending until there is a contract that's developed that, that, that we're comfortable with, you know, to say...
So if we, if we ever reach an agreement on a contract, we don't have to accept the money, we're not out any extra money, we're not, we're not on the hook for anything.
And this money, this money is based, this grant is like a, I don't see if that might be able to explain... And this money, this money is basi- this grant is like a, and I don't see if that might be able to explain this better, but this is like a reimbursement grant. For every dollar we spend, they'll reimburse us eighty cents the first year. And so, that's basically the way it works.
Was this what you thought the grant money was going to be? Did you think this was the amount? I, I don't know why I remember, like, seven hundred thousand dollars.
Yeah.
Yeah, we thought one hundred was seven hundred thousand.
What, what happened was, we engaged the Texas Indigent Defense Commission to prepare a planning study, which is what y'all received. And the planning study, the Texas Indigent Defense came in and looked at all of our numbers, current and historic, and said, if we, if, if you want to, or if you are to implement a MAC on the model that these other counties have, this is all the stuff that you would need. You know, you would need an executive director, you need a chief defender, you'd need three support staff, you'd need an investigator. And when we looked at that, we thought, we do not need all that. And so we scaled it back. And so the grant application that we presented was much, much less than their planning study. But if you look at their planning study, that's where that huge amount of money came from. And I was not going to come into this room and say, we need this, we need all this.
So ultimately today, what we're saying, what we're voting on is for you to sign for the grant, have those funds locked away, not spending it, not supporting it, at the, if we don't come to an agreement on how we want this run, then we can just say, never mind-
That is exactly right.
And then give the money back to the state.
That is precisely right.
It requires us to adopt a managed accounts, managed assigned council plan of operation, which we don't have one to adopt anyway.
Right.
If, if we want to access grant funds.
Right.
So this is just leaving it sitting down there in the state until we have a contract?
Yes, yes. And the, you know, the other like little wrinkle in this thing is, and like I said, I've talked to these people extensively. Like I had the, the executive, the acting executive director of TIDC and their head grants guy. And so we're really all on the same page on this thing. They understand, like, what our limitations are. They understand that this is a new thing. I mean, it's a new thing for us, and it's really, in some ways, a new, a new thing for them. Because, you know, we're a lot smaller county than, than these other MAC, and that, in these other MACs, and that's why we want to position it to be like a regional type thing, which is, to me, what makes it really go into the future.
Do you know how many counties have a MAC?
Uh, I do. There are, I actually think I have. Actually have a, that was one of my slides when I presented over at the Bar Association.
For those of you in other offices, you can slip out if you need to.
I know, this is riveting.
You mean, this isn't gripping testing, you know, there ain't one on here, this is-
So there-
Kelly Cassell is now exiting the room. Kelly Cassell is exiting the room.
Of the two hundred and fifty-four counties in Texas, seventy-three have either a public defender or a managed assigned council office. There are three that have just a managed assigned council office. That is Lubbock County, this is not color coded here, Collin County, and McLennan County. Collin County's is not private, and I don't, I'm not sure about McLennan County's. Collin County's is in the House, and so that's actually a position that is funded by their county. It's its own county department, and it's just for their mental health caseload in Collin County. And actually, the young lady that was in charge of that was part of some of our conversations and meetings.
So there is a council only of those mental health cases?
In Collin County, and it's a, and it's a county department, it's not private.
I, I heard her speak, yeah, well, it's not out by itself, it's underneath the-
There are some counties that have a combination public defender's office in a MAC, like larger counties like Harris County, I think Travis County has one of those.
All right, now, there's only two that are just, that are proposing.
Well, there's one that I know of, Lubbock, that, that is, that is-
Lubbock and McLennan, it sounds like-
McLennan, I'm not, I mean, I'm honestly not sure exactly how theirs is, I mean, it may just be starting, because this, this data says-
We have one.
We have one, and it's a sing- and it is a single county MAC. And, and that's what I'm saying, the, the, the thing that excites me about this, if we do go forward with it, is the fact that we will be positioned to serve more than one county, which I think is really, in a lot of ways, a revolutionary thing in providing indigent defense-
Your future ideas, we started here, then we bring in Fannin and Cook.
So then they're bringing in money to our Grayson County MACs?
Yes, they will be, they will be, if, if, if we can get it started, and if we can make it work in Grayson County, then I think we would have the ability to go to Fannin County. And, I mean, all of the counties around us, all the counties probably in the state have the same sorts of problems that we do, you know? And so, we could approach Fannin County, Cook County, and talk about, this is what this office can provide you. And, and part of the difficulty that we've had in developing these numbers is the fact that the numbers that we've received are from MAC offices that operate in, in counties that have a lot higher population than we do. So like, the numbers are like way off, you know, like, dollar spent per population, dollar spent per case. Now, these are, these are counties that have, you know, fifteen district courts. And so, we've got to figure out a way to leverage the economy of scale to where it makes sense.
And all your administrative costs in here, you know, have to come out of the, the grant or what we're spending on indigent defense right now. So whoever's going to run the office, whatever support staff they have, the operational costs of the office?
Insurance, I mean, all kinds of stuff, yeah.
And it may be news to you, but, you know, I focus on the fiscal issues of everything. And that's not news to you, I was, I was just-
No, I do too.
It's so, you know, my, my whole thing is, you know, to go forward, what is going to be the budgetary issues that are on this? How does it operate? How much is it going to actually cost us?
Yeah.
How much is it going to spend divert away from-
Yeah.
The law year costs that we have right now?
Yeah, how much are we spending on the bureaucracy or of it to make it function, is the question.
And then if there's no set fee, and, and everybody has the discretion of paying X, Y, or Z, that's a problem too, I mean-
Well, I think that would be set up by the board, but yeah, that's, well, that's an issue that we're faced with now.
I know, no, I know that.
And does the board get any stopping for serving on the board?
Does what?
The board of the MAC.
Do the members get stopping for serving?
Whoever, no, whoever is the oversight people.
The oversight people are people that we, to y'all point.
They're, they're the ones who run the 501(c)(3).
No, no, the, the oversight is the county's part of it. Like, which is the next item. The judges, a representative from your court, one or more representatives from your court, our county auditor, and a member of the Bar Association. There's no stopping involved in that. I mean, if you agree to serve on it, you're not going to get any more money. And, and the-
I thought you said there was a group of lawyers that would be the ones-
The lawyers, the lawyers would be establishing, they would be, serve as the board of directors for their office, and-
So the, the five lawyers answer to the board?
The five lawyers are the board.
Oh, I thought you said it was like, the judges and Commissioner's Court?
That's the oversight committee that operates on behalf of the county.
So there's a committee, and then there's a board?
You got the county track, and you have the MAC board of directors, completely separate.
And who all gets paid?
The executive director slash public defender gets paid, and their administrative person gets paid.
Okay, so there's going to be two people in the office, is that-
Yes, yes. And, you know, like I say, I mean, you know, it's going to have, it's going to be up to the board of directors of the MAC to hire this person. Anyone who's ever hired somebody like this knows that there is probably some degree of negotiation that is involved. This budget that we have developed with TIDC is like the budget of our county, it's a planning document. And so it's certainly possible that, that the amount of money in this budget will not be fully spent. As budgets go, they may, they may spend more. But I think we were very conservative in developing this budget. We worked with TIDC, we looked at their numbers, we looked at a lot of county numbers. Cezet Smith was involved in it, so I mean, we, we feel like we've done a pretty good job. And that was the budget that they kind of approved for it. But there, you know, like you say, I mean, there are a lot of details that are just like way, way, way down in the weeds, that are going to have to be discussed before this thing's implemented. But, you know, this is the next, this is the next step in it.
I'm just trying to figure out, how do we do this where it's not a no, but it's not a yes either yet?
Well, we, basically, we, we agree to what he's, what he's asking. And then if we form the committee and it, we don't come to a, an agreeable contract or process, then we kill it at that point. If we can't come to any kind of a, a, agreement that we're all comfortable with, and how it's going to function, and where we think the costs are going to go, and everything else.
Do we even have, need an oversight board until we get a, a plan of action that is acceptable?
We've got to have an oversight board to get to the next step.
Yeah.
We, we have to-
To develop the plan.
And TIDC is going to, they have the people that are going to, they come in and-
Right.
Work with you.
Yes, to the extent that we need their assistance, they've committed to providing that, that sort of expertise.
Then it comes back to us to see if the plan's even something we could even-
Your commissioner's court will be presented with a contract before a penny is spent that you are, that you approve. And if you do not approve that contract, then we just continue doing things the way that we do them now.
And the contract would include this plan of operation that's required?
Yes.
Yep.
And, and that's part of what our oversight board is, is necessary for, to make sure that we communicate with the board of directors of the MAC to make sure they understand what our obligations, or what, what obligations they are going to be undertaking to serve our county. And, and, you know, I don't want to give any names of the people who have been on, who have been, we've been communicating with about the board of directors of the MAC. I think all of these people are very honorable professionals who you know, who will, who have a lot of experience, who understand what it is that we're trying to do. I don't think they're going to-
On the, from a conflict of interest standpoint, are the board of directors eligible to take cases?
No, no. There, there, it's like, one of the things that you'll see in the oversight board is, you know, such and such a person will be on the oversight board unless not statutorily allowed. And so there are, like, you cannot be on the board of directors if you accept cases from the MAC, from, from indigent defense cases. Can't be on the board of directors if you're a prosecutor. Can't be on the board of directors if you're in law enforcement.
What is, and so what is the, I mean, it blends in together, so I mean-
Does that mean we're going to have a lot of family law lawyers on the board of directors?
Well, they are lawyers, they're lawyers that have a great deal of experience in criminal law.
So how do we take action to form an oversight board?
How do we take action to do it? The, the next item-
But we don't have any names, you're just taking action just to form a board?
To, to form an oversight board consisting of a representative of your court that you select. Today or at some time in the future, each court, each district court, each county court at law will select a representative to be on the oversight board. And all of the judges, with the exception of Judge Fallon, have agreed to be on that board. Judge Fallon wanted us to report to him what was going on, and he'll certainly be included.
I think that was the part, is that the conflict of interest? That the judge that's got to oversee the case is sitting on the board, oversight board?
No, that's the board of directors is-
We already do that, yeah, you know, we, in a more, in a more direct way. And, and it would also include, the only really specific person it would include is Ms. Smith, who's still here, our county auditor, who needs to be on there really to keep track of all the dollars and cents on this thing, and to like, present her expertise in-
Okay.
In these things, and then there, there would be a representative from the Grayson County Bar that they would select.
I said, do you need more discussion, more information?
I'm sitting, looking at a point where we're further down the path than we were. Now what we're looking for is a motion to allow Judge Henderson to sign the grant. And then following that, we need to-
We'll have more-
Have another motion to form an oversight committee. We still haven't signed a contract-
Correct.
To get any money from the grant.
Or authorize accepting any money.
We haven't authorized anything. I mean, it is tying up the money that we're moving forward, because we can't do anything till we have an oversight committee.
Well, this is, this is a statement of, he would be signing for the grant, saying, we were, we are accepting it, but we're not committed to spending it or utilizing it, or obligated until we spend money on it. And at that point, before we do that, there would be discussions from the oversight board as far as the contract and the ways and whys and therefor's and thou shall nots.
Correct.
And the portions of this estimated cost that the grant does not cover is coming out of funds that we're already spending anyway. Do I understand that right? Out of each court, is that coming out?
Well-
From the indigent defense.
The current-
She's nodding, so yeah.
The current, the current budget doesn't have this in it, because we don't have a contract in existence. But I think the conversations that we've had is that there, there is money in the budget, potentially, to satisfy the ninety-five thousand coming from the judiciary. In other words, you would not be pulling money-
Right.
From any other department other than indigent defense to pay for whatever it is we need to pay for, once we get it going forward. You know, the, the other, the other thing is, is like, if, if we don't, if we don't get it going until-
Concerning nine and five, nine point five, I would like to make a motion to allow Judge Henderson to sign this statement of grant award.
I'll second.
Got a motion by Commissioner Arthur, seconded by Commissioner Hardenberg, all in favor?
Aye.
It's unanimous?